Call the work session to order. Tonight on the discussion is a discussion on blight and we're also going to add the discussion on the DVA director's position. So before we get started, is there any public comments on work session related items? Now we'll move straight on to the work session. Do you want to cover the blight first or what?
What?
Okay. Yes, we're gonna have a discussion on blight. Public Safety Director Dave Botman has prepared something.
Evening, Your Honor. If I may, I'm just there by a little background history on blight and I will mention I have Officer Frost with me. He is our blight officer and does the lion's share of our work. I left for you a copy of the blight report that's current that we just made this week and a copy of the ordinance that we used. Blight has many faces and has many people that deal with blight. For instance, noxious weeds and grass is a blight issue. That's handled by the Department of Public Works. They send letters out, they do the mowing, they follow up on that. We don't deal with that. Blight also is junk cars and abandoned vehicles and inoperable vehicles in people's yards. We see a lot of that. That's handled by officers at the Director of the Sergeant. We typically, a couple of times a year, we'll do a assignment section that we'll go around, we'll tag up a lot of cars. All the cars we tag, we tow probably 20 percent of the vehicles that we tag. The rest of them get moved by the owners. Now, the problem that we find, we had just a couple of weeks ago, I found a bunch of cars down off Anglineman Street and I called the officers and we tagged them over on Ninth Street by the car wash and the guy just moved them, towed them off, dispersed them to the neighborhoods. He actually went to one abandoned home and put three of them back. He didn't even stash them back there. So, we tagged them again, started the process over, which I find frustrating. Well, they started moving them again and I met with Officer Paffling and I said, "Just tow them. They've been tagged. I don't care where they're at in the city, they're tagged. If you can locate them again, they've been tagged. Tow them if they're still blighted." And a vehicle has to be unlicensed or inoperable or visibly broken down to be tagged. So if you have a vehicle with flat tires in the plates, it's gonna get tagged for seven days. You got seven days to get that vehicle off your property or fixed remedy. A lot of people can bring them into compliance in seven days, fill the tires up, get a set of plates on them. They go and buy insurance, get a binder, get a set of plates, cancel insurance from around and re-drive the car and it can sit for six months. One interesting case was, we had a fire truck that's been sitting around in heaven for 19 years and the neighbors complained often, but the vehicle had historical plates on the vehicle. We really didn't have a lot of handle on that. One lady made an issue this year and I met with George and George found some latitude I might offer in the ordinance and the owner who lives in Canada got a letter from George and he eventually moved the vehicle on his own. We were prepared to tow it. We've got another vehicle that's a bus that's parked in the backyard off of Second Street. Actually, the vehicle has a tree growing through it. It's a camper bus. It has historical plates, so it's legally licensed and I can't make him turn down and prove it in operation. So, we're working on trying to find a way to get that in front of a judge, to have the judge order up to take out the property because it's been there. And I don't want to just tag it seven days, put a hook on it and have it go away and all of a sudden in front of a judge trying to explain something with a historical plate. We work with George trying to make sure we cover our bases and don't put the city at risk for any liability. Other blight is anything from shingles being curled on your house, to siding falling off, to paint that needs to be redone. And to be honest with you, we don't do anything with that at this time of the day. We have to prioritize our blight enforcement. What we're dealing right now on these letters is junk in your yard, visible garbage piled up, dilapidated roof, garage is falling down, walls falling down. What I would consider a major blight, and you can drag that on here, you can see it, I think Dennis probably gave you some pictures, and I thought his presentation was kind of timely last week, it gave us a good platform to jumpstart this conversation. And we do a lot of those. As you can see from the letter I gave you, in 2016, we had 41 blight investigations. Of those, we issued eight tickets. Twenty became compliant to our satisfaction, maybe not to Dennis', but to our satisfaction. And nine, we still need to meet with George and give some resolution work after bringing it in front of a judge. What happened is, if you have a blight instruction and you decide not to move your garbage, by rule, I give you a civil infraction. You come to City Hall and pay a $50 ticket and it's done until we start over again. So we gotta write another ticket after seven more days or 10 more days, start over again. And then what we do is instead of making them let him pay the ticket, we have George to put him in front of a judge. And then the judge can order it cleaned up. They refuse to clean it up, the judge can order us to clean it up. Now, that hasn't happened very often, but it has happened. We were responsible for tearing the home down on Clay Street to the cost of $10,000 to the taxpayers and we ate that cost out of our budget to remove that home. We also removed the home on St. Mary's Parkway that burned because the owners defaulted on that and it went in the back of the bank and the city ended up beating the bill for removing that house. So, just in those two cases, the city ate $20,000 in cost to do blight enforcement, which is kind of the negative side to blight enforcement in terms of how the budget, because I don't budget, I don't think any of us budget in any of our budgets for home demolition. So, but those things are gonna happen and the more blight enforcement we do, the more likely it is that we're gonna be demolishing houses. There's a house at 900 High Street that's high on my list and it's high on my list to be demolished. And Officer Frost was given specific instructions to tag it and get that as our next project, get the house removed. Was sold this week. So now, the yellow one across from City Club, the roof that got the tarp on the roof, well, that's sold. So now that changes the whole dynamic and I got a new owner who wants to come in and wants to rehab the house and get the roof done and flip it. So, we're, by, not necessarily by law, but in terms of how we like to do our law, we have given an opportunity to make that right. So John, now he knows, we'll send him a letter and say, "Hey, I need a plan from you that will bring that house into compliance on the blight." Rather than a notice of if it's blighted, he'll say, "It is blighted, but send me some plans how you're gonna fix it." And he'll give them an opportunity to fix it. That may take three or four months to get that done, but to us, voluntary compliance with the blight laws is a much better fit than enforcement and taking people in front of a judge and charging fines and not getting it fixed. Tosses, if you're familiar with the greenhouse, is another example. We've been dealing with tosses for a year. The owner had moved out of town and in the fall, we blighted her. And she called, she's really upset and she says, "In the spring, you know, it was winter and I got fraught, I can't fix the wall, I can't do this, I can't do that." So we allowed her to go through winter with the problem that she'd fix it in the spring. Well, then this spring, a new owner showed up and they started working with community development to rehab and make that a viable business again, so it stalled. We worked with Denise and eventually that property gets flipped and now they have presented to Denise a plan to pick out a blight. So, it's still a blight infrastructure, but there's a plan to fix it. So, to me, I wouldn't expect Officer Frost to write them a ticket, put them in front of a judge because we have someone who wants to make that a viable business. So, there's a really, a line we walk every day, trying to keep people happy, trying to get more inclined to get things fixed to make a statistical arrest and give someone a ticket. Exit Realty was a really good example. Guy left town, trashed the place, totally, it was a pit. We noticed it the first day he left and we put a tag on his house. Well, then, the jumpers came through and cleaned up most of it and got, you know, the scrap people came by and picked up most of it. It's still trash, John has been ordered to write a ticket. But we know that that owner is not in the state of Michigan. So we'll put the notice on the door, he'll default on the civil infraction, we'll put another notice on the door and we'll try and get in front of a judge, but he won't show. And then maybe eventually, the judge will tell us to clean the property up. But when we do that, we flip the bill for that. We maybe will put on their taxes. The reality is, we're never gonna collect. So blight for us is a financial burden to all of us in the city, but it's also a lot of work for the officer to do. John Frost works a regular shift. Right now, he's on midnight, he works 12-hour days. So, one week he works five days, one week he works two days, from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. It's tough for John to do blight on those hours, but he does the best that he can. He stays after it and sometimes when I get frustrated, I'll reassign blight to Officer to a day shift for like two 12-hour shifts on days and sometimes on overtime, just to hit blight to make it dent and try and get it back to even. It's a struggle for us with our schedules. You get somebody off who's been injured, sick, and they can't work for three or four months and we're filming those shifts, there's no flexibility left to bring that guy to day shift without paying overtime. That's a hurdle we have. We're very sensitive to blight, we work hard at it. I don't believe on the current model, we can satisfy anybody in this room to make the city satisfied with blight and taken care of. We're 20 percent maybe? We're getting, we're actually making a big impact on about 20 percent of all the blight that's out there. If we had a full-time blight officer or someone that we could dedicate to it every day, what we would do is we would create a pyramid of priorities. We take the highest priority ones first, the junk, the garbage that are there all the time, we knock them off, then we start looking at other stuff like paint, shingles, screens and doors as we make impact. Realistically, if I had access to someone, I could dedicate that every day, it probably would be five years before we would get to a point where people would really start saying, "Man, we're really making a dent in blight." As nice our city looks, there's a lot of stuff out there that will be blighted and the cost that would be high. I don't have Bradford, I made a suggestion at Bradford to, I'd like to take my office staff who works five hours a day and I suggested I would add three more hours to their schedule. In the morning, she'd do paperwork on the blight and in the afternoon, I have her do field work and I would have her doing blight every day, five days a week, and John could back her up, put enforcement and that kind of stuff. City Mayor had talked about, we'll run the numbers. Well, the numbers are tough. By the time you put them on full-time, and she goes and parks on it full-time, and you put her on a pay scale that's consistent with the actual level of employees, about a $30,000 difference in that because you got murdered and you got social security and you got unemployment and you got all that other stuff that goes with it, blue cross. And then when you get a person working that hard on blight, that I can almost guarantee you that our contract with Mr. Saylor is probably gonna change because we're gonna dump a lot more work in his office expecting him in there. So, blight to do it right is gonna cost us thousands of dollars as a city to impact it. So we have to make a decision, how do we wanna do blight, what's important for us in terms of blight? And are you satisfied the way we're doing it now or do you want to opt against it and put more resources to that? And at the end of the day, what's the end game we're looking for? So, that's kind of my pitch on blight. I guess like some feedback on City Council, we can talk about it. If you have specific questions about a specific property that's on the list, John would be happy to answer those.
You put the notices on the door, correct? Do you go, is there any step in that process where you go back and you send a letter?
We start with a 10-day notice. And then in 10 days, we inspect the property to make-
But that 10-day notice is attached to the door of the house or-
We actually do it by mail.
You do it by mail?
We do it by mail, lets me know for sure they're gone. If we know someone moved out of state, we would put it on the door, like exit realty, we put it on the door. But if we know we have an owner or an occupant, we send it right to the house.
Okay. Do you know if they're behind their taxes or anything like that? Do you do any kind of a background check on that?
Any what?
Do you check to see if their taxes, property taxes are paid up to date?
No, it doesn't, it's not a factor in the blight law. And to be honest with you, most of the people that live in the house are renters. I would say, I would say, what'd you say, 80 percent are renters?
Eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent are renters. So, in-
Well, that's-
They default on taxes, wouldn't make a difference if it's blight or not to us.
If eighty-five percent of them are renters, then is there something we can do in our rental program?
There probably, there probably is to some degree. I don't know if there's a rental inspection program in spectrum of blight that we're dealing with. They do inspect for blight in terms of windows unsecured, springs, those kind of cockmenny. They're more tuned into the interior and the safety of the homeowner in terms of smoke detectors and that kind of stuff. When Mark Neeson was here, we used to work with Mark a lot. We put Mark in the car with us, we'd go out, we'd look at blight together, it was a nice partnership. We haven't really, we haven't really got that level with, not that they wouldn't do it, I'm sure Spicer would love to do it with us, just probably more on our end, not having the timeframe to do it with them. But Spicer doesn't, their inspection doesn't include the stuff that we're doing. And they don't have the enforcement ability that we have as well.
I'm just thinking that there has to be an ordinance governing rentals or something we can put in force to get the landlords that are not like Mr. Cidera, because I know his properties are pristine, but there are other properties in town that are not, to keep them up to a certain standard.
I would, I would defer to George to answer your question on legislation.
The blight ordinance is enforceable against both the property owner and the renter. So I don't know that we need to go anywhere else. I think we're able to enforce against the property owner and the renters. We probably know usually which one's responsible depending on the type of blight. If it's the house falling apart, it's really the owner that we should be looking to. If it's junk out in the yard, then we probably wanna look to the renter. But we can enforce those provisions against either the property.
A lot of our people that we enforce, we get them probably judged, they pay a fine, they clean the garbage up and within three days, they start over again. They just keep throwing stuff out the front porch. It's not, it's not like clean once is clean forever with some of the homeowners we deal with. There's some people out there that are just slobs. And they'll be slobs until the day they die and they'll pack stuff up for the house, throw garbage out the window and it's just a concert term.
Have you seen any impact since we changed the trash pickup to every other year? Did that have an impact or are you not seeing it?
Yeah, I don't think so, no. Yes, I don't think it had any impact at all. I think it's lifestyle of some people living in some of them.
Chief, do you think if we had a building inspector again, that would help?
It'd be tough to answer the question. I mean, if we had a full-time building inspector, I'd probably give him blight back. I would take it away from the police department and that'd be a person doing it full-time. That would help, absolutely. I don't think anybody here would recommend that though, the staff, that we do really go back to that. I think there'd be a hybrid model. I know that City Mayor had talked about even bringing out some summer help during college student, in the summer, to go around and identify blight houses and start the first step. That could work. Not a full-time person, still require an officer. You know, we're at, we're constantly training, you get somebody for one summer, you got to over the next summer. It's just a constant turnover of people and continuity of the program. To me, it's very important to make sure that people undertake who to deal with and have a history with them. And for me, long-term, like for John, it's nice to know that John did it all the time because of somebody else. So, yeah, if we had a blight, if we had a building inspector, we would just have blight back in completely and we would be out of the blight business. I'd make a complaint to him and he'd be back there telling the same thing to go over.
Well, if we didn't go with a building inspector, you know, you mentioned summer help, having somebody from West Shore College in their corrections classes?
It's an option.
I mean, that's great experience for them to be out every day, walking and beating.
It is, it's an option. There's no question that that person, if we had that person, we could make a dent and certainly we would have a better, better amount of time tracking blight during the season. We'd use that person, there's no question about it, it'd be a better, better model we have today.
And we have two sets of eyes with Officer Frost and Kennedy X.
Well, just somebody to get, just somebody to get the initial letter out and see the blight, tag the blight, file off and photograph and keep a file. So we open the file up on a certain address, we've got pictures of what it looked like on this day and that day and track it and get the letter out and the tickets. It would help because as it is right now, John's work schedule makes it very difficult for him to keep up with that kind of work. We thought when we did over blight, it wasn't gonna be too bad, but it's a lot of work. I mean, I think we're all, we're a little surprised on the blight there in the city. Because once you start looking at blight, you can flip over by any rock and find, find blight a lot of places. I mean, I've got a really good example, there's a house on First Avenue painting now and I've been looking at it for years with no paint. And then a house on Ninth Street, no paint. It would, it's a perfect example of how it's blighted and should be getting, but on the grand scheme of things, it's so much less of a blight issue than the garbage on Anglineman and kind of the Osborn and Seventh Street that it just doesn't reach our level. How the guy's worked for your paint really next job.
Yes.
Have you tried to look into any kind of program, community program? For instance, when you did the light up the porch when we were having break-ins, is there anything like that that could be like light to bright? Have you looked into any kind of programs like that?
In terms of, I'm having trouble hearing you. In terms of P program, where Love-Aid would come and do something for a homeowner?
Yeah, for that.
Where are those programs? And we would refer the homeowner to those. There's a number of them out there that people can use and if a homeowner says, "I need help doing that kind of stuff," we would refer them out. But then it takes that homeowner, that resident to take those steps. We're not positioned to do that for them. I did have a, I had a home where a guy was in medical care and his wife got a blight officer, got a ticket, or got a notice from Officer Frost and she called me and she was just in dire straits because her husband was in medical care, he was sick and I put an email out and had like five of our, five of our officers in front of him, went to the house and helped her clean up her yard to get her back in compliance, just as a community But people that access United Way, Love-Aid, Five Cap, and those programs, they need to do those. We don't do them for them, no. I know the program out there, but it requires them to do them. And I don't know that even any of those programs, after you send people to the house, they might help financially. You're probably more likely as a homeowner to find a church group. If you remember church, it might have a crew come over to help. And sometimes there's summer programs that come through and they fix, as you know, doors and windows and stuff like that. But those are typically driven through the churches and we don't drive that train. We may make a referral.
Chief, can I ask the schedule of fines that if you tag somebody two or three times?
You know, if this guy is $50 for the first one, John was-
They go to Cordis, usually $500, I think.
Yeah, it's $250 for the first fine, $500 for the second one and then doubles for the third.
But that's what they pay. What if they pay at City Hall? What if they just come and pay? Is there a civil infraction?
Then it starts over to the first civil infraction. It doubles double until they, unless they don't pay.
Get in front of, get in front of the judge. Okay.
So that first fine's $250.
Right. The first fine to the hall's $50.
No.
Right? Is it $250? Okay.
Would it, would it help if we put some more teeth in the fines?
No.
The list of blighted properties that we have, is that public information?
This list?
Yes.
Yeah, true.
Okay. Is there, would it be out of line if we said, "Here's a list of blighted properties in the city of Manistee, maybe you can help your neighbor, some kind of a link to bring it to people's attention?" Because I think helping each other's neighbor might take care of somebody that issues that you seem to be struggling with because you can't get to the ones with the bad lighting, the feeling of pain kind of issues that maybe-
It's one of those, Dan, if you don't, I mean, if I put it out there that I think your property's blighted and you don't think it's blighted and I put the dang finger on it as blighted, you might be upset with me and neighbors might try to help. Yeah, it's a risk reward and we really haven't calculated the risk reward of that to make that decision. We haven't considered tagging people, social media or our website that they're blighted. We haven't talked about that. And I don't know how anybody here would feel about that. Because as soon as you do that, the minute they're cleaned up, you'd better get back on and say, "Hey, by the way, they cleaned their house up, they're blighted." And if you're two days late, then you're gonna be an SOB for not getting out there. So, yeah, it's an option. I guess I'd have to have some, I wouldn't wanna make that call, I go.
Right. Well, the one person that I talked to on my side of town that had three properties in question, and I thought she'd be at the meeting tonight, but I don't see her. She just wants to know where her complaint goes because it takes so long to get these items corrected. And there was nothing I could do but keep asking, you know, where we stand on these three. So, I'm wondering if there's a different way that people who make complaints, and I don't know how many you get from private citizens that come in or if they're just, or just driving around, you're spotting them, but I'm assuming that you're getting a fair number of people who call about them.
We spot most of them. I get a few referred from the City Manager's office. And typically, we try to get back to people when they do that, that we have the message and we're looking at the blight. We don't create, we don't have a form that sends out, kind of knows they're gonna be doing, or do an update. We don't do that. It probably wouldn't hurt. Anybody could call and ask about the status of a blight and that puts a burden on them to call me. I suppose in the process of our blight, we could create a follow-up letter to the complainant that said, "Oh, we did this, we've been contacted, we've done that." We could do that. It adds, it adds time to the process, but it's not a hurdle we couldn't get over.
I think it would be helpful, especially since most of them are due to the fact that you're going out there, you're spotting them, but for the few that actually make the complaints, they need the feedback because it just seems to take such a long time.
There were a guy yesterday who's been complaining about tosses for months and he complains we don't get back to him and John Frost called him, he got no answer machine. John's called him 10 times, he doesn't answer. John wrote him a letter. I called him to file off, he doesn't answer. I wrote him a letter. He comes to the manager and complains we weren't following up on the complaint so we don't reach out to him. And I wrote my third letter to him this week to follow up on it. So I don't, you know, sometimes you do the best you can do and you can't complete everybody. But I think that that's worth looking at and John, I'll take a look at a follow-up letter to people complaining, we gotta complain, maybe we can check that box and we've done this and this and this. I wanna make it easy for him where you're not creating a whole lot of more documents to mail.
Chief, some of these, you mentioned earlier about the house on High Street?
Yes, sir.
That it's rented, of course, and now it's sold. And of course, that nine-two Cypress Street, the ever-going New York sale, all the junk.
Exit Realty, you talked about that one?
Yeah. Is there a way that, I mean, if a property is blighted, that it's for sale, that we could work with the real estate agent or a real estate company, do you get that cleaned up?
Yeah, I called, I did, I called Darren Ferguson on that one because Darren's a real estate agent on that and his answer to me was, the thing about taking a sign off, that property wouldn't be associated with it. They weren't willing to do any, take any responsibility for cleaning up that property. They have no legal responsibility. I don't know if they have any legal right to go on the property and clean it up. I think the only time we get legal right is when we go in front of a judge and judge says, "City Mayor, they default the other way to clean it up." And they give us authority to go and clean it up. And I don't believe that any realtor would have any legal standing because as soon as they did that, someone said, "Well, that was valuable and you stole it." And then we'd be handling a bunch of other stuff. I guess it puts an unfair burden on them. I just don't, I don't see, I don't think that would happen. I think that'd be unfair to the realtors and I don't think they have any legal right to do that.
We don't. And speaking as a realtor, we don't. The best we can do is to, since we have a signed contract with the seller, is to tell them, "We're not gonna get a bid on your house unless you clean it up." Really encourage them to do that because they're probably costing themselves several thousand dollars just by losing hurt appeal, which is important, so.
And Darren was aware that he was gonna make no ground in that house. He's gonna pull the sign and hopefully when the bank took it over, the bank will call and relist it. So, he knows that he's in the wind on that property and that guy's not gonna make it good, he's not gonna, not gonna build himself a house. It's just, he's abandoned.
Even though the scrappers picked up a lot of that metal and wood and things, there's still windows and carpet-
There is, there's still junk out there. And you still need to get a ticket for that. We still need to not even give him a chance to come to City Hall and pay that. And I've asked John to write the ticket and require a big court date for that and get it from a judge as soon as possible. So the judge can order it cleaned up and if he doesn't clean up on the third day, then we go back in front of the judge, the judge orders us to clean it up. And I'd like it that that flows no flies. So that's your timeframe, right? I mean, look at Thanksgiving before we get, before we get an order from the judge to have us go and clean it up and then we end up beating the cost. And in the meantime, it looks terrible. And you get everything from rats to who knows what. And the homeless people start to see those houses and they know that they're available. So you get people, the evaders should say, "They left." You know, and you start getting squatted on some of these properties. We gotta be careful about that too. So it takes, it probably takes us on a really good, solid footing, sixty to ninety days to get an order from a judge that gives us any authority to go on that property and seal it and, um, clean it up unless there's a massive hazard that's, that's really visible to take to court.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. First of all, I want to thank Josh Loff and Walden, all that he does. It's a tough job. I relate to it. I did. On the enforcement part of the law, on section B, George, if you have that, could you explain that to me?
With such, I mean, are you talking about the ordinance?
Yes.
Keep, John just showed what happened.
The way I read this is that if John comes to my house and says, remove the garbage, gives me a warning, I remove it, and three days later, a week later, I put it back out, it doesn't start from the beginning. It started, it started, it can start right from when you told me the first time.
Yes. I understand your question correctly. Once we went through the process, you don't have to start at square one?
Up to twelve months.
For twelve months.
Right. So if, like, we heard last, at the last council meeting, the people will clean it up when he goes there, and then they turn around and put the garbage back out. We don't have to start from square one.
Right.
We can...
Well, I, I, but I, I would think that, um, let me just look at this.
Just confusing to me.
Well, i- i- if it's a different violation, we probably would start all over. If it's the same issue, so we issue a ticket, or a violation for a particular junk in the yard, um, and we go through that process, maybe they go in and pay the ticket. In that instance, if it's the same violation, I, within twelve months, I think that we don't have to start at square one. But if they cleaned up that junk and put out different junk, then I think we're going to start.
Well, I mean, dirt, weeds is dirt.
And that, but that, but see, that's, as you know, from, from the system, that's the, the, you have a letter of the law, they have a spirit of the law. If you go in front of a judge and say, he had a couch with ten bags of garbage on it and he cleaned it up, but now there's a four bicycle frames in a refrigerator, wrote a ticket, they'll be blighted him on the couch, the judge isn't, the judge isn't going to buy that.
I think that, yeah, and I think what, um, Dave is talking about as well is, is a due process argument. And where I'm going to be prosecuted, even for a civil fraction for something, um, I, I have to have notice and an opportunity to be heard. And I think the idea behind constitutional due process is that, um, if I've got a ticket and we're going to reissue it for a violation for something that's completely different than the previous violation, I don't think that's adequate due process. And so I think there'd be a potential chance.
I'm just trying to...
If I was asked, I would tell them to start over on...
I'm just trying to understand because it's confusing to me.
Yeah.
On section C, um, what is that, what is that referring to, that each day that a violation under this ordinance continues to exist?
That's a, that's the same thing we did with the fire truck, is when we sent out the order of correction, uh, pointed out that if the ticket had to be issued every day successive, a- after that would be a separate violation, and someone could issue it. In theory, you could issue a ticket every day. We're not going to do that. Typically speaking, if it's something that we're just looking to, to, to be corrected and we're going to go to court, we're going to issue one ticket, we're going to go to court on it, and not just ask for fines and costs, but we're going to ask the judge to order the property, order to clean up the property. And the judge will typically give, they gave pretty good timeframes on that. They usually give them maybe thirty days, depending on the violation, thirty days, say, to clean up the property. If they don't clean it up in that thirty days, usually what we're looking at is my filing a motion with the court, asking the court to, uh, for a show cause order, why the property owner should not be held in contempt for failing to comply with the court's cleanup order. And then at that hearing, if there's still no adequate explanation, uh, the judge will likely cite them for contempt and fine, and then he can, if we ask for it, give up the authority for the city to go in and clean up the property. Of course, if it becomes a cost issue then, then, um, we are able to lean the property for the costs we have, um, but sometimes...
Collecting's a different deal.
I appreciate you clearing that up for me. It just confuses.
The property claimant was the very best example of a house that was dangerous and blighted, and it took us an entire summer, but the judge finally ordered the city to remove the structure and tear it down. And we put on a tax, but the individual is, there's no way in the world where I would quite have died from that guy. We may have owned the property and selling it to somebody, but the guy's not getting no, no million to pay, no matter what happens, so. Your vote is great. We'll pay that bill.
Well, I would like to see a link on our website regarding blighted issues, so that people know who to contact and they can maybe track, if we can put these out there in, in a format that people can understand easily. Um, I think it would be helpful to see that, okay, I'm worried about this property, okay, it's been reported, it's on this list. Read some other information about it, say, for example, that it normally takes maybe sixty to ninety days or maybe a hundred and twenty days to resolve an issue.
We could do that, and I'll talk to Mr. Bradford, the city manager, about how they want to proceed with that. But you need to know what the city councilman does, and these people are going to complain about a certain blight that we're not going to deal with. And if they call and say they're paying on the house on Eighth Street, need to be paid up, we're going to tell them. We understand that, but it doesn't reach the level we're going to deal with it. And they're going to, and you as elected official are going to have to accept that to say, we can't get to it. It's just not within our, not within our financial means, not within our timeframe or budgets, and there's a certain kind of blight at this point in time that we're going to have to, have to take the heat, and we're going to put that kind of message out. There's some blight that we're going to have to ignore.
Understood. I, I don't mind taking the heat for that, just so it's easier for people to follow up on these issues that they complain about.
I'll talk to city manager this week or next week. We'll talk about that and see. I'll do that. I'll do that.
Any other changes that you'd like to see done by DA?
Is there any changes to the ordinance or anything that we could do to make that process easier?
I'm not afraid to make that recommendation, but I'll talk to John and I'll talk to city attorney and see if there is. Off the top of my head, I don't have a recommendation for you, um, but I think it's a question worth asking, but I'll talk to the guys who are doing the work on the field and see if they have any recommendations for us. And I'll talk to George, if so, we'll write on the back.
Thank you.
I would like you all to consider how you want to proceed, if we are willing to invest more money in blight, if we're willing to invest more time and more staff resources and, and the return we would get on that, on that investment. So if there's something for you all to think about as well. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, next on the work session, we're talking about the process of DDA director. There's been some question as to the process in which the DDA took in hiring the next director. So, is there any questions specifically?
Yes, I would, I would like to review what that process is supposed to be, uh, for the hiring of a DDA, for the DDA director, as according to the by, the bylaws. I've read the bylaws. I'm confused by their language that it has to do with consent of city council. Um, so I would like a discussion on that, and you're certainly involved, and that's why I'm sure that you've got plenty to say, um, and see where we go.
Sure. Um, as council's well aware, the, the DDA's been in a search for a new director for the last seven to eight months. During our budgeting process, um, it was brought up that they were looking for somebody more heavily, had experience in economic development, which council as a whole really liked that idea, to get more into the economic development of the downtown. There was a budget line item in there for that position, which was approved by council. DDA through the summer, um, was in search. They looked at different, they had stopped the search at one point to look at various ways that possibly they could collaborate with other agencies or organizations within the city. So that the search was stopped, um, they did the investigation, they found that was probably not their best choice to move forward. So they resumed the cho, the search. In that search, they identified three areas which they felt, when they looked for this person, what were they looking for? They were looking for somebody that had a four-year degree, that had experience and knowledge of the DDA, and had some economic development background. In the first round, there were no applicants that really met any of those qualifications. They put it out there again, expanded their search. They got a few more resumes. There was a few in there that they decided to bring in for an interview. One never called back, one, when they called, obviously didn't, had no idea what they were calling about, had no idea. They wanted more information on the job that we were calling about, um, so obviously that person was eliminated. That left two candidates. A phone interview was put down to see if it was worth, the wild, because we were called out at town to bring them in for an interview. After the phone interviews, it was decided to bring them in. That was posted, council was invited. In fact, during those interviews, two members of council, three actually, yes, sat in on those interviews. Meeting was scheduled, that happened on Wednesday. There was a meet and greet that night, um, several people attended. And then on Friday, there was a meeting to discuss, it was posted, to discuss those interviews. It was decided to proceed with one candidate and to make them an offer.
Was that decided at the Friday meeting?
Yes.
Who was it posted?
It was posted Thursday morning.
Where?
Um, city website. It's still posted. You can go back and still listen at the camera. And you can ask our city manager. I inquired, I asked him who I needed to contact. No, he was out of the office that day. I talked to Michelle. Michelle said she'd get it posted. It was posted at the same time. Now, the DDA, there's been some question whether the DDA had the authority to go ahead and offer that job. Well, there's interpretation that the DDA took when they looked at the bylaws. They had interpreted to say that the council thought they had the approval of the position, not the person. In the fact that the budget was approved with that salary in it, council approved that, that there was approval through the budgeting process, that yes, you had approval to hire a director. Along with that, there's past practice, the previous two directors, and the only two directors the DDA's had, was hired without council consent or approval. So there was past practice, which then, the interpretation that the DDA took of the bylaws supported their position. So when the paper came out and announced that there had been acceptance by the candidate to take the job, then there was, I started to see some emails questioning whether that was proper enough, whether they followed their bylaws. I had conversations with George today as far as to what was the interpretation. His interpretation was that, yes, it did have to come before city council for approval. In discussions with members of the DDA, they had also misinterpreted what those bylaws meant. Again, going back in past practice, where city council has never approved the previous two positions, thought they were within their right to go ahead and offer that job. After George's opinion, uh, DDA is more than willing and wants, you know, to abide by it and bring it forward to council. However, there was not a complete meeting until, that was last Wednesday. This is a work session, and they will be contacting the city manager's office to get that on the agenda during this week. There was no miss, you know, intent to bypass council's approval, but their interpretation was that council approved the position. They did not interpret it saying that council needed to prove the person, they thought it was just the position. And again, if you go back to what's been done previously, that supported their position.
Well, having no involvement with what happened previously, I just read the bylaws myself to see if everything was being followed. And it, and it was clear to me, at least to me, my interpretation again, that when it says, the board may employ and fix the compensation of a director, subject to the approval of city council, that a step seems to have been missing. So that's why I started raising some questions about it.
Right. And I think the D, the current DDA, previous DDA boards, previous councils, city managers, I mean, this was all done previous before, without these questions being asked. I think it's good that they're being asked now, because if it's not the intent of their language, then yes, we do need to correct it. And I'll be making a recommendation to the DDA that possibly those bylaws need to be a little bit more clear going forward, because the interpretation was the position, not the person. They, the candidate that they've chosen and who's accepted, they're really excited about it, they feel he will do a good job, and they're excited about bringing him forward to council for his approval. I think the quandary and the difficult situation is, they went ahead and made an offer thinking that they had the ability to do that. The candidate is accepted, the candidate's truly excited to come here, he's already looked at, but think, from what I understood, made an offer and a home here, wants, even though he's not starting until mid-October, wants to be part of the DDA board meeting tomorrow, by home. This gentleman is really excited to get going in our community. So that is the process of how it happened, why it happened, how we need to make corrections going forward to make that language more clear, so there is no misunderstanding.
Absolutely.
But again, you know, they were going by two history, and it's never been raised until now, so obviously there needs to be some more clarification.
But having, how do we go forward since we have to, we want it on the agenda, right? We want it on the agenda.
We need to have it on the agenda, yeah.
So how is that going to be awarded on the agenda? Do we have a general idea of how that's going to be awarded?
The DDA would be recommending that we hire Tyler as the next DDA director.
Okay.
When, when we, when we look at the process, and I understand the position was budgeted in the DDA budget. But in the budget, we have department heads, we have a finance officer, we have a chief, we have a public works director, and the city manager hires those people. But the charter says with consent of council. I mean, it's not a unilateral position when we talk about department heads, and they are budgeted, and they still require consent of council. And my councilman, I, I read the bylaws and, and I, I looked at it. I called Mr. Sauer. I said, what's your opinion on this? Is council approval required for this position? And his answer was yes. Again, his interpretation. I went to the interviews, um, I thought they were interesting, I wanted to see what the people had said and how the interview proceeded. It was in the newspaper. Um, I got an email that they were going to have the interviews, so I had an opportunity to attend, um, but I never saw a posting of a meeting following that. I don't, I don't think there was any public opportunity for people to attend a discussion when, when we did a city manager hire. The hiring process and the subsequent discussion of the candidates and all that was in a public forum that was currently in front of, and it was advertised. We made sure people were aware it was going to take place and had an opportunity to attend. I'm not saying that there was an attempt to avoid that, I'm, I'm just saying there was an opportunity missed to bring people into the mix that were interested in the process. And I'm concerned that we've gone a long period of time without a director. And there's a lot of workload on some board members, um, and, and some things that could be moving forward that aren't. But again, I wasn't here when Patrick Kay was hired or when Travis Alden was hired, so I'm, I'm not aware of the process. And I just think, you know, a lot of things get budgeted, uh, but they come back to council for additional consideration. They have, they're over twenty-five thousand dollars, they have to come back for bit approval and such as that. And again, the same as department head being hired. Certainly, Mr. Taylor leads the way in selecting a department manager and such, but those positions are, are budgeted. And, and again, he sets their wages as the bylaws of, of the DDA, say, uh, per the charter. But again, those three positions are consent of council also. I just, I just think we missed some steps and, um, I didn't see the posting. Other people didn't see the posting, so, and, and we want to be transparent, we want to make sure everybody's afforded an opportunity to attend these events that's interested in them.
Well, and as you pointed out, the DDA had not had a director for seven to eight months. And based on the interviews were held on Wednesday, your input was asked for, as well as council members, and let's be provided input to the interview team at that time. Based on the holiday weekend, the amount of time that position's been empty, the fact that the candidates were looking to see when there was going to be a decision based on schedules, it happened to be that Friday. That was the best time for the DDA to get together and discuss and talk about it.
There's just a question for George. Is it mandatory that council, if, if council approves this person? What if council didn't approve this person?
Well, then we have a problem. The DDA, certainly the, I, I think the bylaw provision, which the bylaw provision is just a verbatim recounting of what's in the statute. I think they contemplate that the decision on who to hire is clearly the DDA board's. And, and I would go one step further when you were talking about the agenda item. I think the question is, the DDA's made a decision to employ this individual, does the council support it or not? If council did not support the DDA's decision, then I guess... If council did not support the DDA's decision, then I guess they'd have to go back and resubmit another name, or resubmit more information about the individual they decided to employ. But the council's decision is yea or nay on the decision of the DDA board to hire a particular individual. Council doesn't get to decide who to hire, just a yea or nay on, on who the DDA board decides.
My only other comment on the whole process was, I understand we didn't, we didn't get everything we were hoping for when we, when we interviewed people, we didn't get all the, everybody, there wasn't anybody that really met all the qualifications.
To the extent that they were looking for.
Right. And I have, I have some, a couple people, one, Duane Jones, who, who asked me about that, who lives in town, who pays taxes in town, who has been on the DDA in previous, in the past, he owns property in town, he's had a business in town, interested in the position, filed, and never even got a reply. I'm disappointed that we didn't at least allow those people to have an opportunity to interview, whether it was yea or nay. Being on city council, being on DDA, having some qualifications, living in town, knowing how the town operates, would always be a plus as far as I'm concerned, it just disappoints me, and I'm disappointed in him.
Well, I guess if you go back to the qualifications that the DDA was looking for, he met none of the basic qualifications. And if you look at the candidate that was chosen, they were looking for a minimum of four years, he has a master's in business administration, he has experience with the DDA's, he is assistant to the economic developer. Like, he didn't have the amount of experience that they would have liked in economic development, his knowledge of economic development, his knowledge of zoning, his knowledge of the people he knows at the state, and the programs available to help developers was better than anyone that we had talked to or we had seen on a resume. If you look, his resume is here, if you look at where he was hired in, you know, Alaso, he gained increasing amount of responsibilities in a short time there. I was impressed with some of the questions he asked, he was able to look at, he had a full knowledge of our zoning down in town in the DDA district, looking at that and questioning how that has helped or hindered some of the development down there. He's a young guy, he is anxious to get going, I think he will do very well with the downtown.
Studying it on the interviews, listening to the interview, does not give me a full picture of who he is, and what he's capable of, or what he's done. I would like to at least be able to see his resume before, if that's possible.
Oh, sure.
Before we have a meeting, so I, I don't know anything about him, other than he was-
Right, and if I recall correctly, you, you liked him, you had an opportunity to talk with him at the meet and greet that evening. At least that was impressive.
He was a nice guy.
You said, you know, after the interview, when we asked your input on him, you told-
I was surprised that he would take the job. That's exactly what I said.
Said you liked him.
But this won't be an agenda item, or a method?
But I guess-
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought I heard.
Well, let's make, that was my only comment, we can make copies and get that sent out. But unfortunately, because of the misunderstanding that goes back years of what the DDA was allowed to do, and the statement was, he's given his notice, he's made an offer and a home, this is something that the, that council is not going to approve next week.
I didn't get the questions, any questions?
You're asking us to tell you now whether we would vote yea or nay?
Are you going to support the DDA's recommendation?
I don't think I can go there.
You don't really want to go.
But it's something that is right now.
I don't think I want to do that.
But, you know, the statute is kind of backwards, and the bylaw provision, to be honest, is a little bit backwards, because it says, "The DDA is to employ this individual." And then it says, "Subject to council approval." Well, how do you employ an individual if it's still subject to some further decision or action? But that's-
I, I think in an employment letter, it can be cleared up by, what we want, at one extent, you would offer for the job, it's contingent on consent of council, as is the bylaws, and that should have been in a letter or an offer that was sent out. It should have been, it was on St. Cage with it to begin with.
I think it could have simply been handled by whoever they selected, making a presentation to council on, you know, we held interviews, here's who we interviewed, this is the person we recommend based on these qualifications and experiences and such, and seeking that approval before making the offer.
But again, going by their knowledge of what they thought that it meant, which was supported by actions by the two previous directors, by councils, by previous DDA boards, by city managers, the community was aware of these hirings, and yet, not until now were these questions asked.
There was a panel program.
So it wasn't as if the DDA went ahead and did something they thought they shouldn't, they thought they were in their full right in offering the individual a job.
Again, coming in without that previous experience, I read it and I thought it was clear the other way, obviously, so that's why I had to question it. And I do think that we need to give that consent, I do think it needs to be an item that needs to be on the agenda for us to take our vote on. I think that's our responsibility as elected officials, to, to do what is required, and I think it's required, and I think it's in the bylaws, and I think it's, it's plain-
And I don't think that the DDA is not disagreeing with that after getting George's opinion, these questions being answered. They're not opposed to doing that, they've been more than happy to bring this individual for council approval. But we're also, would like to be fair to this gentleman too, and do we need to let him know that council mayor need approval?
Is it possible for him?
Does that mean we have to finally say, "We have to start off," or is it, based on what George thinks?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I-
Now that it's all said and done, if we go and vote yea or nay, if it's nay, does that mean like we start all fresh, and this gentleman is out of the job?
Well, he, he could not be hired, correct. I think there, there may be some labile issues that we should discuss with the DDA, you know, since they offered the position, at least in reliance upon that and the belief that he had a job, you know, committed himself financially to something. It's not an issue for this council, or I mean, it might be something that you'll be thinking about or considering, but the, if this council said that that person they don't want to support for the position, then he can't be hired.
I'm thinking it's to like, learn our lesson, we can still follow, but it's, you know, it's kind of too like longing to, like impression how of hiring this person or not. Maybe it was bad on us, but-
Is it possible for him to attend a meeting, the next meeting?
He's getting married, I think he's going to be-
I know, I said it was getting married, yeah.
I think, I think it's next week.
He wanted, the meeting is being residents, you know, over marriage.
Oh, come on.
Well, he's learned his lessons well, hasn't he?
Walking on thin ice.
Yeah, I know.
You know, the job is offered in good faith, the DDA thought they had the ability to offer him that. They now know after talking with the questions that had been raised, they now know, and gotten George's opinion, that they really needed councils, and they're more than happy to do that, you know, I'm sure they'll be talking about how they can change the bylaws to make that more clear, and where the interpretation can't be muddled. But again, this has not been done, you know, part of it is past practice, there was no intent of trying to bypass council's approval, they just really believe that that was not required.
I, I think going forward, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that people clearly need to be aware that meetings or even committees for, for certain commissions and such are clearly given notice, so people are aware that they're being held and have an opportunity to be there to participate in the process. The idea that we sit in a council meeting on the 6th of September, and on the 7th of September, I picked a paper up and see that the DDA economic director's been hired, and starting the 17th of October, was a bit offensive to me, because I was anticipating that it would come before council, according to the bylaws. Again, I wasn't part of the process for the previous two directors, I would admit that. But I think, you know, one of the things that Mitch impressed on me when I joined city council was that our bylaws and our city charter and our council guidelines are important documents, and we adhere to those, to the letter of the law, strict observance of those. Again, my anticipation was that we would have that process take place, and I was quite shocked when it opened in the newspaper.
Again, the DDA really thought they were following their guidelines and bylaws, not only based on how they interpreted, but based on past practices. So it wasn't, again, an intentional trying to bypass the bylaws, they interpreted one way, which was supported by past practice. So the questions arose, George was consulted, and now they realize that, okay, they need to change or make more clear going forward, that these were interpreted incorrectly and not followed correctly in the past. And I guess when they go through, if they need to go through this process again, they have a more laid out plan. Again, as you noted, you know, this position's been empty seventeen years, and I was trying to get somebody in there quickly, eight, nine months, thank you, trying to get somebody in there quickly, you know, was more benefit to the DDA than, and that is why the, and the tightening of people's schedules precipitated having that meeting two days after.
Something that we can clean up, we can definitely clean this process up. There was a stumble, there was no malicious intent with this, it was an honest stumble.
I don't believe anybody, I don't believe anybody on that board would do anything maliciously to, to violate intention or any rules. I just, I can never believe that would ever happen. Maybe misguided, but not intentionally do anything.
It was, it was good that council went and beaten, brought that up, and again, now we, we clean up this process, so there, there's no issues going forward. I think the whole thing's a misunderstanding, and based on what happened before, we have an opportunity to put it on agenda, present it, take a vote on it, and follow the process. I'm comfortable with that. I would also go along with what council men's Linsky says, I don't think there's any malicious intent, the people I've worked with, with the DDA board are honorable people, I think their intentions are good, they don't try to mislead anybody, I commend them for all the good work they do for the city. But we also need to follow the process.
And I'm sure they'll be looking at that process and, and making sure that the procedure is put in place to make sure that this doesn't happen again.
Mr. Saylor, is there anything we should be doing, or looking at, or thinking about to ensure that in the future, we don't, we don't get in this situation again?
I would hope that the record here, in memory of future council and city managers will be that, will recall this, and it'll be hard to forget this. The mayor suggested to me that maybe we want to do something with the bylaws to make it a little more clear, and I think that that makes sense. Again, while the language, I think, is only open to one interpretation, it is still, though, a little bit confusing, I think. And so if we can, whether it's a bylaw provision, or correction, or addition, you know, maybe something along those lines would, would assist future DDA boards in understanding of the process.
And I appreciate the opportunity, I appreciate the opportunity to have this all being open, and I appreciate everybody who made comments, and we'll still go away, we won't shoot each other in a parking lot or anything, I hope. It's, it's, it's been a good discussion, I think it's been beneficial.
I'm sure that the resume of Tyler gets out to all council members.
That would be great, especially if it'll help me.
Yeah, and I think all of you will be impressed for such a young man, what he's accomplished and what he's done and the experience that he can bring, and I think that's why the DDA wanted him to offer.
I'm sure you did some checking, were you privy to any of that?
I believe that all the background checks and references were checked, for this individual.
We could get those too, is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay, great, that would be great.
Is there an opportunity to review minutes from the meeting where the discussion took place?
Sure.
It should be, so you know, one of the things I've noticed, and it, and it's again, with the transition of, of the DDA and all that, the last minutes I saw online today were April.
There, there have been minutes, and they've been presented at council meetings, because of the lack of DDA, you know, those DDA members have full-time jobs or run their own businesses, and those little things do slightly fall through the cracks, which is, it's really important that we get somebody in there to help make sure that those little things get taken care of.
Thank you.
That's it?
Let me make one comment. This coming Thursday, September 15th, at 7:00 PM, there is a meeting.